This is Peter Casper, acting chairman for tonight's meeting in the absence of our chair and vice chair. But we have established quorum, and so I call to order the regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Selectmen for May 4th, 2023, and move forward with requests for everyone to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, is all liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Beautiful, I went through that. Okay, so Andy, the proclamation, do we do that before?
Well, you have the item on the agenda item would be additions or changes to the agenda.
Okay, and then we've established the reading then of the proclamation under that, number three?
Yeah, you would, yes, yeah.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you for your patience so well. Turn it over to Tiffany for that.
Well, first off, is there any additions or changes to the agenda?
Oh, I'm sorry. I got you. Say patience. Thank you. Are there any additions or changes to the agenda?
And then public comment would come before the proclamation.
Yeah, I'll get them. We'll get there. So I would suggest just a clarification. I don't know if it's a change, but due to the Board of Finances meeting tonight, I would think under Old Business, item 8C, where it says proposed budget update, you would need to take action. So I just want to make sure that's clear, or if you want, if the Board wants to add that as a change, you can do that now.
Okay, I think it's clear. I don't, I've been so acknowledged that in this section. But I think that's clear. Yeah, appreciate that unless someone disagrees. Okay, thank you. Sorry, I wasn't looking at the agenda. So I see what we are now in the process. So the next section on the agenda is public comment. The section of the agenda is reserved for persons in attendance who wish to briefly address the board. The board requests that comments be limited to three minutes or less. Persons wishing to comment should type comment and your name in the chat box, and you will be recognized. We will, just in the interest of time and respect for the process, be timing you. So please do not feel insulted if we note the time, because we do need to move the agenda forward. And I'll turn to Donna to acknowledge any public comment that we may have at this point.
Okay, our first public comment is from Meg Clifton.
Thank you, Meg.
Hi, thank you. First, I just want to say thank you for all of your hard work. I know that budget season is probably never fun for anyone. So I thank you for all of the long hours. This was a really tough budget to watch, and I felt like the Board of Selectmen kind of lost control of the narrative a little bit surrounding everything with the Department of Public Works. I was so disheartened to see all of the signs popping up all over town, some of which had kind of misleading information. And I know that was not the work of the Board of Selectmen, but I do want to bring that up because I think it's really, really important moving forward that it's extremely clear what we're voting on. And I know that things were in the River East. I read the River East every Friday. Unfortunately, a lot of people go based on a random sign that they see in the middle of town or some like meme that someone posted on social media. So I just wanted to really urge you to communicate as clearly as possible about what we're voting on and how things are going to impact the budget. That being said, there was a lot of talk online about the 245K for the design plans with the Public Works Building. I worry that if that is not taken out of the budget, that this will be defeated in two seconds when we go to referendum. So that is just what I want to pose as my public comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Donna?
I don't have anybody else at this time.
Okay, thank you very much. Moving on to section five of the agenda, good to know and special recognition. So we'll typically turn it over to Andy. And you mentioned the proclamation that Tiffany will read.
Yes, if Tiffany's willing to, which she'd stated, I think she's a good person that could take care of this for us tonight. And Gil Richmond's absence, who's always read it in the past. So Tiffany, if you want, take it away.
Sure, thank you very much. This is a Town of Hebron proclamation recognizing childhood apopleasia of speech. Whereas May 14th, 2023 marks Childhood Aproxia of Speech Day, during which awareness will be raised throughout Connecticut about childhood apopleasia of speech, an extremely challenging speech disorder that affects one in 1,000 children. Whereas childhood apopleasia of speech causes children to have significant difficulty learning to speak and is among the most severe speech deficits in children. Whereas the act of learning to speak comes effortlessly to most children, those with apopleasia require early, appropriate, and intensive speech therapy, often for many years to learn to speak. Whereas without appropriate speech therapy intervention, children with apopleasia will have diminished communication skills but are also placed at high risk for secondary impacts in reading, writing, spelling, and other school-related skills. Whereas such primary and secondary impacts diminish future independence and employment opportunities and challenge the ability to become productive, contributing citizens if not resolved or improved. Whereas public awareness about childhood apopleasia of speech in Connecticut is essential for families of children with this neurological disorder and the professionals who support them to achieve the needed services for those learning to use their own voice. Whereas our highest respect goes to these children, as well as their families, for their effort, determination, and resilience in the face of such obstacles. Let it be resolved that the Town of Hebron hereby designate May 14th, 2023 as the Proxia Awareness Day, and citizens of Hebron and surrounds are encouraged to work within their communities to increase awareness and understanding of childhood apopleasia of speech.
Well done. Thank you.
Very good. Are you waiting for me, Peter?
Yes, sir. I'm sorry. I thought there was in the good to know. I didn't know if there was.
There is. There's, here we are, Donna's multitask. I very really appreciate Donna and Doria's staff and all they do. But next up, it's the kickoff of summer. We have the Town Center Project. It's quite a bit. They know we have a full agenda, so they're going to give a quick presentation on the upcoming events that they've been working diligently to showcase our town. With that, I believe we have Holly that's going to do the, be the presenter.
Hello, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes, great. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you very much for your time this evening. The Town Center Project, also known as TTCP, is working diligently. Donna, if we could go to the next slide, where we started. So the Town Center Project was established in 2017 by seven residents and local business owners with the mission of creating a more vibrant town center, a place to see, eat, and do. In the beginning, workshops and idea raising events were held at the library in Hebron Day to obtain community feedback and input to see what type of events that the people would want to participate in and how we could make our community just more. The board settled on a few events to try. Committees were formed. The Town Center Project was often running. Some of those initial events have continued. Others have been modified or some discarded due to lack of participation. But it quickly became clear that the sustainability of the Town Center Project needed to establish a nonprofit status. So in September 2017, our 501(c)(3) was obtained, which has greatly allowed us to broaden our fundraising capabilities and our grant writing abilities. If we could go to the next slide, Donna, thank you. So just a few photos of what we do. So we have our Make Music Day. So in 2018 and 2019, the Town Center Project widened our reach and kind of narrowed our focus. We brought townwide events to the center of town, like Lazy Days of Summer, where passive games were set up on the green spaces along Main Street, summer concerts, a mile of music for Make Music Hebron, the Fourth of July celebration, and of course, our ever-popular Harvest Moon Festival. We brought those all to our town center all to benefit our community, our neighbors, and our businesses. We began to really see the true calling of the Town Center Project, and that was really community-based through art and volunteer commitment. Our mission, the mission of the corporation is the reinvention of restoration of Hebron, our historic town center. We will accomplish this revitalization using art installation, annual special events, and other activities to engage the community, attract visitors, and promote our downtown to become a see, eat, and do destination. While our mission says it all, our name lends to the center of our town. I personally would like to see that become more of our center of community. The art installations that we've produced start at Arundack Chairs and the Snowfolk of Hebron. They not only bring community, they not only bring people far and wide into our town, but they also bring in the locals. They really beautify our space. So in 2023, which is kind of why we're here, thank you very much, a full schedule of events is happening in our town. The mission of the Town Center Project is to bring people to the town, to the center, to shop and enjoy local restaurants, promoting our local economy. We keep that in mind when we curate all of our events. So we're going to be starting this year, our season off with Market Day, which will be taking place this coming Saturday, May 6. This will be our second year having this event. We're very excited to share that we have grown substantially from last year. Last year, we saw 57 vendors attend in 2022, and 80 will be present this year. Additionally, our local police estimated that we saw between 2,000 and 3,000 people in the center of our town due to this event last year. We're hoping to see those numbers increase this year with the influx of visitors. Through the, we are expecting large numbers this year. We've chosen to limit the guest food options at our event so that we can promote our local eateries a little bit more. Sunday, May 7th is our townwide tag sale. June 21st, the Summer Solstice brings Make Music Hebron to the town with our Mile of Music from the corner of 8566 all the way down to Teds, with a few highlights at the Firehouse Field, Cobrick Village, and a kazoo parade, which is always loads of fun for the young and the not so young. We roll into summer with the quaint New England Celebration of our county, our country's birthday. The Hebron Summer Concert Series this year is going to be on Friday nights, starting in June, going through July. The concert series has turned into a mini tanglewood, really. People pick up a dinner locally, bring a table and chairs, and settle in for the evening. It truly is special. In 2018, when we started the concert series, we saw about 20 or 30 people attending them. Through the hard work and dedication of our volunteer concert committee, our last concert in the year of last year saw about 180 people in attendance. This year's lineup has been remarkable, a lot of different genres. And last but not least, we wrap up the year with our ever-popular Harvest Moon Festival on October 21st. These amazing events bring 7,000 to 10,000 people into the center of our town. We work with a lot of different local community places. Hebron Veterinary puts on a dog, a dog parade. The library does a haunted library. The Drama Club comes down and utilizes the American Legion for the spooky skit. It's really a great event, and it's really all about community. So if we could go to the next, our next slide, Donna, we just show a couple of pictures of our Market Day. Our new chairs that the Ram High Schoolers painted for us, and one of our concert scenes, the number of community members who come out and participate. It's really wonderful to see. Last March, we also held a snell us selfie with a snow folk contest, which was very well received. So if we could move on to the next slide. Where we're going, the Town Center Project constantly looks for ways to grow, to bring more to our community, both the residential community and the business community. We engage the people who participate with us. We encourage feedback from our town leaders to help us remain relevant. We consist of all volunteers, seven very active board members, and a handful of citizens at large who all truly love our town. Our board meets twice a year, June and July, I'm sorry, January and June. During this past January's meeting, I had pitched a new art installation idea that I kind of smitten with, but my board really wanted to see the chairs of Hebron and the snow folk be expanded to incorporate the entire Main Street and Johnny Horton Boulevard. The Town, the Town Center Project, with the support of our town, our community, and the volunteers sees a bright future, continuing to create townwide community events and assisting in the health of our local business economy. So with that, we have just a couple of more photographs that we'd like to share with you guys. If we could move to the next slide, Donna, thank you. We have the National Art Honor Society at Ram, who painted our last six chairs that grace our Main Street. The Harvest Moon crowds of 2022, which you can clearly see were crazy. We have bagpipers that participate in Make Music Day for us on the lawn of the fire department, the kazoo parade, and new last year was the Scarecrows on Main, which was incredibly well received. So we will be broadening that program again this year. So I just wanted to say thank you. If we could move on, thank you to, for all of your time tonight for letting me take a few minutes of that. Thank you for your service. Like Meg had said, I know this is a crazy time, and I appreciate your eight minutes. I'm here to be happy to answer any questions about the Town Center Project, listen to any feedback or suggestions. Next year, I promise that I'll approach you guys a little bit earlier in the year so that you have a clearer picture of what the Town Center Projects, your head looks like.
Thank you, Holly. Good job.
Thanks, Andy.
Any other comments? Great work. Thank you so much.
Thank you, guys, very much.
Dan Larson here.
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to thank Holly and all. They've done so many wonderful things. It's been truly a great asset to the Town of Hebron, and they've done wonderful, wonderful things. So my hat's off to them, and thank you.
Thank you very much, Dan.
Andy, before we go forward, Dan, do you, I mean, obviously, I'm happy to continue to go through the agenda. Did you want to take over, or are you still based on?
No, 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 no.
Okay. Well, that's fine. I can hear your voice, so I don't want to continue talking if you were going to take over the agenda. So thank you. So Andy, next on the agenda would be our appointments and resignations?
Yes, so next is item six, appointments and resignations. The first one is item A, Catchment Area Council 15 Appointment. Attached is a letter from Maureen Schaefer D., a Democrat, expressing her interest in serving as Hebron's representative to the Catchment Area Council 15. Below that is a proposed motion, and then also a description of what's the Catchment Area Council membership is comprised of.
Okay, Andy, would we read, in addition to the resolution, we read the description as well?
Only if you feel necessary. It's up there for the members or people to see. It's up to you if you want to read that, or have someone read it, or I can read it.
Well, it's up there for the, well, why don't we go ahead and read it, since some may be listening without the benefit of the slide? So should I do the resolution first, or should we read that first?
I would read that first and then do the resolution.
Okay, so I'll read the Catchment Area Council membership is comprised of town residents who are living with behavioral health challenges, family members, concerned citizens, as well as behavioral health providers. This group reviews and evaluates current behavioral health services and identifies gaps based on town needs and recommends changes that will serve the region. Your life experience, knowledge of the ins and outs of your community, combined with quality research and data can bring needed services to strengthen our region. Is it, do I say CAC, Andy here, or is it CAT?
Yeah, you can abbreviate. It has, it has the heading up above.
Okay, CAC 15, Andover comprises of Andover, Bolton, Ellington, Hebron, Manchester, South Windsor, Talan, and Vernon. And with that read, I will read the proposed resolution. Move that the Hebron Board of Selectmen appoint Maureen Schaefer as Hebron's representative to Amplify Catchment Area Council 15.
I'm not sure if she's on here. If she has anything.
Oh, yeah, if Maureen's on, she's welcome to say something before we.
I didn't see her.
Okay.
I know, I'm not trying to put Allison Smigel on the spot, but I think Allison knows her and also serves in some capacity on that and could say something if she wishes, if the board allows that.
Sure, Allison, now you are on the spot. Let's go.
Hi, I'm actually, I'm so happy I was able to join. I hope you all can hear me. I'm at my Twins baseball game, but this was super important. I wanted to just call in. So I'm also the executive director of Amplify, who leads the Catchment Area Councils for our region. So I was going to thank her for her service. I don't think that she's on, but I will be personally reaching out to her and just connecting her with the meeting date and time. I can bring up to speed on some of our activities, and I just want to thank the town so much for supporting her and for the Board of Selectmen appointing her. Thank you so much, and I'm happy to answer any questions, assuming you can all hear me.
We can hear you fine. Are there any questions from the board? Tiffany? Mark, Dan?
Allison, you just want to kind of do a quick overview of what some of the responsibilities are of that board, of that commission?
Yeah, sure. I'm happy to do that. I hope it doesn't cut out. I'm up on the upper field at Burn Hill, so the service is not great. So we actually have a number of Catchment Area Councils in our greater area, because we cover 37 towns. And so for CAC 15, it does cover those towns that were mentioned, and it's exactly as it indicated. This has been in statute for quite some time. These Catchment Area Councils have actually been in place since the mid 70s. And it's a wonderful opportunity for people with lived experiences to inform our systems improvement efforts, to make sure that our town and that our region has the behavioral health services that we need across the lifespan. And what's really great is that it covers prevention, treatment, and recovery. So for example, we have some people who are really interested and have a lot of voice around substance use prevention or mental health promotion for little kids, all the way across the gamut, across the continuum, to members that have been living with serious persistent mental illness and, you know, have been navigating that journey their whole lives. So it's a wonderful opportunity just to make sure that those lived experiences inform, you know, our systems improvement needs so that we can make sure that any member of our town, you know, if they needed to access behavioral health services, that they're able to do so close to home and that they're of the best quality. So it's a wonderful model. Like I said, it's been around since the mid 70s. And I just, you know, kudos to Hebron. Thank you so much again to the Board of Selectmen for supporting this. Not every town always makes it a priority this way. I'll just say that out loud. And so I just, I'm very, very appreciative and very grateful, and I'm so happy that she's able to step forward and volunteer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, with the proposed resolution read, I think we can move to a vote. All those in favor, aye, opposed, nay, any abstentions, please note those. Tiffany?
Tiffany Tealy, aye.
Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
Dan?
Aye. Dan Larson, aye.
Okay, Peter Casper votes aye as well. Resolution passes. Thank you so much, Allison, for joining us, and I hope your son wins his game.
Both of them. Yes, thank you.
Both of them. Oh, my goodness.
Thank you all. It's okay. Thank you all so much. I really appreciate it. They are on the same team, you couldn't be.
I'm going to say that'd be a little bit harsh.
Thank you all so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you so much. Move on to agenda item number seven. Back to you, Andy, for the Town Manager's Report.
Okay, Town Manager's Report, recent activities. So as you all well know too well, we've been working diligently on the budget, the referendum, and then the aftermath. We are still trying to get this Wall Street sidewalk moving forward and out to bid. We're close to doing so, so we've been putting a little bit of time into that. Also, at the same time, after our six-year wait, the Route 316, which is Wall Street, and the Route 66 intersection is going to be going out to bid for those improvements. Just quickly, what that's going to do, it's going to add another lane on Wall Street to turn right, heading towards East Hampton or Marlboro. And then there'll be new signals, signals so that people can cross the street without people turning on, right on red and having an issue. So it's been long awaited. That's going to be moving forward. Hopefully get that under construction before winter hits. We did negotiations with the Supervisors Union for the Town of Hebron. That'll be hopefully brought up later on to ratify. We're very busy in the hiring process of hiring new positions. To be clear, one would be the Public Works Director. We're also looking for a Public Works Administrative Assistant. We're advertising for a building inspector. We're advertising for a fire marshal. We did a second interview today for a new park supervisor. And we are also looking for two, not one, two, fire maintainers. Those are the daytime firemen. Not only did Dave leave, and Dave now works across the street from my house here, but the other gentleman is going to be going to another full-time department. So we're going to diligently try hard to fill those positions. So that's been very busy with that. You'll see a little bit later in the agenda packet, there's a job description that we amended. So hopefully you guys will approve that. Help us move along. And then we had a post-Mapple Fest meeting, a wrap-up meeting with the committee. There was a lot of discussion, and I'm getting a lot of correspondence that are coming into the Town Manager's Office that I'm going to share with the Board of Selectmen. And we want to talk about how we want to move this festival forward next year. I think there was a few wrinkles this year that weren't clearly vetted out. We want to make sure that the committee, for one, voices are heard, and then also the Board of Selectmen know exactly what the committee's supposed to do and not do, and make sure they weigh in on how they want to see that run. So I think it's important to do a recap on that. So that'll be coming up in a future agenda. And that's all I had for right now. That was enough. Unless there's any questions on that.
Just, Dan Larson, are we doing exit interviews with the fire department to figure out just why we're suddenly losing so many people?
Yeah, so definitely the two very, very clear answers. They're going to these larger departments that give the flex hours, Dan. They're making a little bit more money, not a lot more, but it's 24 on and then the rest of the week off. So it's kind of hard to compete with that. The other gentleman that just recently gave us a notification, I think he's going to Farmington. And from what we're, what he's doing here, that's a bigger department than even what Dave Thurs went to. So that's like a $20,000 bump in his situation. Dave's was roughly the same money, but it's the flex hours. So as a smaller, the smaller towns, we have the 40-hour, 36-hour work weeks. It's kind of hard to combat that.
Okay.
And that was clearly, clearly the two, both were clear, and they love the department. But they didn't have any issues, but with these bigger departments offering those flex hours, it's hard to compete.
Okay.
Thanks, Dan. Anything else for Andy in that section? Okay, we'll move to section eight of the agenda, which is Old Business.
Yes, so under number eight, Old Business, we were proposing a workshop for the American Rescue Plan, ARPA funds. We did not have that meeting due to lack of quorum, so we forwarded it to this meeting. It's just a suggestion. If this, if Monday, the 8th, doesn't work for the Board of Selectmen members, then we'll, we'll do a poll and see if you guys still want to get together to do a workshop. We felt it would take too much time to do it in a regular Board of Selectmen meeting with the size of the agendas we've been having. So I'll just throw the, the date of Monday, the 8th out there. And if that doesn't work for people, then just let us know that tonight, and then we'll do, we'll do a poll tomorrow or Monday next week.
Hi, Dan Larson. I can, I, yes, I can do the 8th.
Tiffany?
I can do the 8th. That's fine.
Mark?
I can do the 8th also.
Oh, I think I'm going to do the 8th too. Let's do it.
Okay. All right, you'll be, I think, I'm going to see if the lane's available for that. Donna, it's going to be a way, I believe. No, you're here, right? You're here, right, Donna, on Monday? No, you're here, right, you're here, right, Donna, on Monday?
I'm still here on Monday, yeah, I don't leave until Wednesday.
Okay.
So we'll send, we'll file that agenda tomorrow and get it out to you.
Thank you, thank you Andy for continuing to push that forward, you're, you're right, it needs to be a workshop, so thank you for uh being patient as we've worked through the scheduling challenge.
Perfect, thank you, thank you, selectmen.
Okay, um.
Next.
Go ahead, yeah?
I don't know, you, I don't think you have an agenda in front of you, so.
Well, actually, I put it on my phone because I started out so clunky, I was trying to recover, and so I uh, I put it up on my phone.
So I'll wait to hear from you whenever you want me to speak, you you give me the nod.
Yeah, okay, great, thanks, so um uh, we wanted to, uh, and I know that everyone has in their packet, uh, provide an update on the Public Works uh Building Project Survey Committee update, which is the uh creation of the survey and getting that out to the public, uh, as well as the project uh summary, providing a lot of um information, hopefully to to give the the public the information they need to uh, to guide us uh accurately, so before, uh, we've got some other committee members on the law, uh, on the call, so thank you for joining us, and I welcome for those to 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 jump in as needed. Um, I I see Andrea and Terry and and Mal, I know he was here, uh, he was here, I mean, oh, there you are, Mal, sorry, and I see you, so feel free to jump in, I just may, um, provide just a a small context to the board uh in advance of this, is the the survey, and 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 we've had a wonderful uh consultant really has worked very well with us, and I know, Andy, you facilitated the identification of that consultant, and he's been terrific, and one of the challenges that we've had, and we've met quite a number of times, is um, to understand the structure of a survey, uh, and the need for it to be brief and targeted to engage the public uh 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 the utmost, to give everyone a chance to complete it, to encourage them to complete it. Um, so as you maybe have seen, the survey is relatively brief, and we don't, we're not trying to do too much other than to focus on the most important thing, which is to get a clear direction from the public. And the most important part, I think, as we move through this, because a lot of the discussion was how do we incorporate more into the survey, and it really again, we kept being reminded, that's not the purpose and structure of a survey, we have to keep that brief, but can we provide a document um that provides some of that reference and some of that um important information, so people, if they choose to read it, will have an opportunity to be uh educated with some some facts, some links, some detail around it, um, so hopefully that'll put them in the best position um to to guide us with uh that, those facts, and uh, and so you'll see the two components. And what we're looking for uh today, assuming everyone has gone through it, and if you haven't, we, you know, we can touch on the highlights here on in in any however much time is needed, um, but the intent was, uh, you'll see the project uh survey is is up, and and we've got, uh, we're a little bit behind, as I've noted, I think, in in some previous meetings, but we're ready to move forward. And so if we can, um, I guess first, yeah, um, assuming the board has has looked at this, does anybody have, want to jump in with some comments and thoughts? Uh, and sort of direct us as to how we're going to uh continue the dialogue here, the hope is that we'll we'll come away um with something close to a a product that we can move forward then to the public as, and that's the objective, is to get your feedback and approval, hopefully to move forward, and then again, if we need to make some modifications or clarification, um, we'll come away from this meeting uh with that objective, so does anybody want to start with any comments uh or thoughts on what they have seen and read in preparation for the meeting?
Uh, sure, I will, Dan Larson.
Sure, thank you.
I thought it was good, I I thought it was good. Um, I was, there has been so much misinformation and or flat-out half-truths uh put out, uh, it's it's incredible, I've I've actually had people come up and and question why we're taking uh, you know, land that was put aside for preservation to put this, and it's it's, it's, there's so many untruths that have been uh put out there, so I'm glad to see that you have the link that will get you or or get people to the uh sites where they can actually get some accurate information instead of the inaccurate information. Um, so I was happy with that. Uh, is is there a way that you're going to be able to verify that most, that uh the same person does not do multiple uh surveys?
Uh, yeah, there is a mechanism in which that can be um dealt with for the most part through the IP addresses, and and we we raised that question, and so um, we'll have a a a pretty uh largely a confidence that the survey will will be reflective of 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 people have done it the right way, as opposed to someone that does it thirty or forty times, so yes, with that the consultant has confirmed that we'll be able to prevent that from happening, or identify if that's been happening, so we'll have confidence in the outcome of the survey.
Thank you.
Anything else, Mr. Larson?
No, no.
Tiffany, there you go, Tiffany?
Yeah, no, I I I like where this is going, I think it's comprehensive, um, I think it's pretty much down the middle, right, because I know we were concerned with tone, and that, you know, some people in the public were concerned that this was going to be a skewed survey, and I don't see that in my expertise as a communications professional. Um, I appreciate that question six has an other, so people can feel free to give thoughts on different sites if they so choose. Um, I think the information provided is incredibly helpful and does seek to clarify a lot of misinformation out there, certainly what we saw um during the referendum. Um, so yes, I I think this is headed uh in the right direction, and I think, you know, with what Chairman Larson just said, as long as there's a mechanism to make sure that there's only one shot and you're done. Um, I think we're, I think we're moving along, thank you.
Thank you, Mark, anything you wish to add?
Yeah, I just want to say, I wish we did this sooner, it's coming out very, very well, and um, I think we waited a little too long, and but uh, controversy, we were sad, if we had done this sooner, we probably wouldn't have been in this mess, so I applaud you guys for getting this going, doing a good job with the committee.
Thank you, and I, and and again, I think I appreciate the overall, uh, the direction that the Board of Selectment took originally with the support of the town to to hire the consultant to make sure that that, you know, and there's no issues here, we are trying with the help of the consultant to be as clear and as unbiased as possible, because we really, really want the public's feedback, this is not a foregone conclusion, we wouldn't go through the effort the time, the energy, the expense, uh, if the outcome was predetermined, uh, and I really want to thank uh, the committee, uh, we've had just great discussions, again, as I mentioned before, diversity of thought, different positions, different opinions to help us arrive at at a position that we think is is reflective of what the intent was initially, so I thank those that are online, and I'll turn it over to um, uh, my committee members who are on the line, if they wish to add anything, Andrea, if I may turn to you first, if you wish to add anything before we uh conclude this discussion?
Uh, yes, Peter, thank you, um, I'd just like to say good evening to Board of Selectment and the Town Manager and others on on the call. Um, and just to add to what um Peter summarized as far as the direction in which we're going, and what we're seeking um as our goal is the public direction and the need for more information in the project summary, in the survey, but also following that, once we get the results, is to create a comprehensive um FAQ, frequently asked questions document that will answer even more questions, and that will um also prepare for any public information meetings that will be held in the future. So we're building, we're looking at building information, um, asking questions, getting those results, asking more questions, and and building information comprehensively that way. Um, and in in our last um committee uh meeting, um, we, and and Peter summarized this, that we added um a few links for additional information, because we felt that it needed a little bit more history clarification, a definition of what what the Public Works Department does. And taking it from the standpoint of, if you really know nothing or haven't been involved in this process, the typical voter, what kind of information would they be looking for from the get-go to follow this process through? So um, so we added some clarification, some history that way, and the four links that um I think were critical that we added is the PowerPoint presentation from the Public Information Session that was held on September eighteenth, twenty twenty-two regarding the Public Works Building Project. Um, the second link is the Horton Property Purchase, which was a video from the Special Town Meeting on March seventh, twenty nineteen. Um, the forty-page Hebron Center Plan Document approved by the Department of Planning, May uh twenty sixteen, and the six-page document of the town's um responses to the public comments from the September eighteenth twenty twenty-two Public Information Session. So, and I, I um took the survey, and and I also I should back up, within the project summary, I ass- accessed all of these links so that they did take me directly there, so it's just sort of a quality control audit that those links actually did work, I was able to operate the video. Um, so the average, the typical voter um can go, as the survey taker, I should say first, um, can go to these links and see what has happened, transpired over the past several years. Um, so the, these were substantial enhancements, um, and it created more volume and more quality of accurate information. Um. And likewise, it creates um an easier, more efficient method for the public to obtain information, and it made the process uh more user-friendly than our first draft that we that we created. Um, so next step is, as we have submitted the project summary and the survey to the Board of Selectment and Town Manager for their review, uh, we're looking for feedback, and we're still on target to um, hopefully implement this mid to late uh May. Um, and we're still working within our timeframe, and um, looking forward to hearing feedback. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Andrea, uh, Terry, anything you wish to add?
I think Andrea just summed it up very well, it's been an interesting process with all the five of us, six of us getting together and bringing different perspectives. Um, we went through a number of iterations and discussions. Some emotion that I fell into when I took a tour of the present facility and just realizing just how much we need to have a solution quickly. Uh, one of my concerns was is, did we actually show the need, and I think we we have done that without alarming anyone. And that's the key, it's the balance, um, I can get on my high horse and get excited and totally lose the narrative, uh, someone earlier, earlier mentioned uh something about narrative. Whereas, someone balancing me out and asking a question in a certain way, I realized that maybe I need to draw back and take a bigger look at things. I really appreciate working with everyone that's been on the committee, I look forward to putting together the facts once we get some feedback. And I look forward to finding some usable input from the Board of Selectmen to help choose what they need to do next. Thanks, Pete.
Thank you, Terry, Mal, anything you wish to add?
Pete, and uh, good evening again to everyone who's who's on the line with us, I think that that uh my three previous uh committee members have have said all the positive things that I would say. Um, I think the most important thing for this board, for the Board of Selectmen to uh keep in mind and to realize and to refocus on is this is just the beginning of the process. That uh, we we are here not only to get this survey done, but to answer the following questions, to help with the education, and this should, this committee should stay intact and active right through the process until it goes to the voters and and even thereafter, I think that uh whether it's by luck or or by by skill, uh, the Board of Selectmen has chosen uh, a very few number of people with very different backgrounds, and I think that benefits the the process here, because if one person has one view, uh, probably three of the four of the rest of us have a different view. And that's promoted some great conversation and has, more importantly, provided additional changes and uh redoing certain sections of this, so um just remember, we're here not only to get the uh survey done, but we're here to follow this project right through, we all believe this is a a needed project for the residents and for our employees, and we look to uh get this thing moving again, so um again, thanks to all my fellow board members or committee members, and Peter, thanks you, thanks to you for being such a qualified leader. Thank you.
Thank you, Mal, and if if any members of the board have have any feedback, uh, please uh feel free to send it to me, I'll share it with the committee, and then I'll work with the the Andy, the town, and the consultant um to move forward with next steps. Thank you all. Thank you for that, and so I think uh next, uh, Andy, eight C is two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four budget update.
Uh, 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 excuse me, Pete, Dan Larson.
Oh, sorry, yeah.
And can we, as a board? I I mean, I'm satisfied for what I see to to move this forward. Uh, at this point, I'm not sure what that next step is, but I would be willing to say, let's do it, let's do that next step.
Okay, well, I mean, the next, in terms of next step, the next step would be to work with the consultant at town in preparation to um, to bring this survey to the public, the communication in advance, you know, where it will all, you know, where it will be housed, and the next step would be to bring the the survey forward, so does Eddie, does Tiffany, I guess start with you, are you comfortable with us moving forward that next step, which is the
Yes, I'm comfortable, thank you.
Okay, Mark? Comfortable with us moving forward?
Yes, Pete, if, if you guys have done all your homework and explored all the possibilities, if you think that's what we should do, I'm I'm going to agree and defer to whatever your wishes are.
Andy?
Yeah, yeah, so what I would suggest. I know we got an echo, I apologize for that.
That's, yeah, Mark. Mark, mute, thanks.
Um, it's in draft form. I I think you would want to bring back a clean copy for the Board of Selectmen to approve to send out to the public.
Okay, so we'll work on the the next steps, uh, we'll have the timing, the details associated with the communication, and you'll have a clean copy, and we'll be prepared to bring it forward at the, at the, after the next meeting based on um bringing a clean copy forward, so that's fine, because that'll give us a little time, uh, enough time to work with the consultant to then frame up the communication, how, where it's going, how it's going, make sure everyone's comfortable with that, in case they get questions from the public asking where to access it, we'll have all that information ready and the clean copy ready, and then we'll move forward at the next meeting. Good point, Andy, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, eight uh, eight C, if we're ready to move forward, Andy?
Eight C is the budget update, yes, so Donna has um the results from the advisory questions. Um, too high, too low, or no answer, so that gives you you or the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance in the Town Hall, myself a pretty clear picture that uh people felt the budget was too high. Um, I've always stated, you know, when I saw what it was going to do to the mill rate and the increase that we were proposing, I I, this wasn't a surprise. The only thing that was a surprise that it went down by so many votes, at least to me. But I think you heard some comments today, and uh, the Board of Selectmen have to make some decisions. The Board of Finance earlier uh lowered the bottom line about uh five hundred thousand dollars with two hundred fifty thousand dollars of that coming from the town's budget. Um. As a town manager, I would make a recommendation, but it's clearly up to the Board of Selectmen how they want to do this. I would recommend that we remove the two hundred and forty-five thousand dollars from the CIP budget due to the uh, the survey and the sounding uh issues of confusion, or just not happy that that money's there before we have a decision moving forward. Whatever the reason, I think the poll tells is telling, and I think we would probably still have a problem passing at least a CIA budget. passing at least a CIA budget or even a town budget with any money's left in there. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't look at this as a defeat. I just think, some people stated, we have the cart in front of the horse. It was controversial, it wasn't clear. So I think at this time, if we remove that $245,000 from CIP, you guys would have to revote to come up with the exact amount for CIP, and then I would recommend that I find another $5,000 within the town's government budget to make that $250,000 on the town side. That's the only budget I'm allowed to really make suggestions on.
Okay. So we read the resolution and then open up for conversation, Andy, or should we, as a board, have conversation first?
Yeah, I would read the resolution, and then we, Donna could help with giving you the numbers. If you saw move to, with the Board of Selectmen after the discussion, so moves to do that or something different, we would work the numbers and put it back. But I, that would be my recommendation, only because it was so controversial and the response from the, the questions, which I want to give Tiffany kudos, was a good idea to put them on the ballot versus having the exit poll. I think we got more of a response than, than the exit poll would have done, and it was, didn't require a lot of, a lot of people standing out there in the cold. So I think it worked very well. I think the people have spoken, and I think we need to, you know, kind of follow that direction. But you guys are the, the Board of Selectmen. You're in charge.
Okay. Does anyone want to read the resolution? Tiffany?
Sure. I, I think for purposes of discussion, I'll read it with just a cut of 250,000, right? Because then it's a separate budget resolution, so I'll go ahead and do that, knowing we may finagle it a little bit, so I can do a friendly amendment. Be it resolved that the Hebron Board of Selectmen recommend a proposed CIP budget to the May 23rd, 2023 referendum of, goodness gracious, how much would that be without the Public Works facility in there, Donna? Or how, how do I read this if we're supposed to be discussing taking out the Public Works facility?
I can calculate that number very quickly, but you would, we would just scratch that line out, but let me give you the, the number very quickly.
Sorry, I didn't mean to put you in a spot. I was just.
No, no, it's fine. I just want to make sure I read it right when we open it up.
Yeah, absolutely.
That's all.
So I come up with 602886.
Be it resolved that the Hebron Board of Selectmen recommend a proposed CIP budget to the May 23rd, 2023 Budget Referendum of 602.
886.
886 for fiscal year 2023-24 as follows. Road resurfacing and road improvements, 320,930. Replace truck 52, 226,956. Jones Street culvert replacement, first year funding, 55,000. Thank you, Donna.
So we should read the second one, Andy, and then discuss them individually.
Yeah, I would, I mean, the CIP's got to get voted on separately, so I would, you could do it either way, but just knowing that there's still $5,000 that has to come out to total the 250. But that wouldn't be coming out of CIP, unless you guys want to take it out of one of those projects. I, I wouldn't recommend that, but.
So then the budget, so the town then would be? How do we incorporate the 5,000?
We would, we would probably just have to do a caveat to the second budget, be it a result that Hebron Board of Selectmen recommend a proposed town government budget expenditure budget for May 23rd, 2000 referendum, and Donna would calculate like she did for the CIP, this $5,000 less from that.
Right there, okay. All right. All right. So as Donna, Donna, will you be doing that now? Can you, and then I'll read the resolution?
I will do that. I'm going to go into the spreadsheet. Hang on.
Thank you. We'll just wait a minute and have her get that, and then I'll read the resolution, and then we'll discuss it in its entirety.
the, the $5,000, you want it to come from the town government line?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So then the new, the new town government line is 9,090,755, and the town government subtotal is 10,009, 10,0979,553. But let me just pull that up for you. That's a different pages here, so. So you can see that 39,065,203 is the number that the Board of Finance approved tonight. So the budget number that you're going to be looking to approve is the 10,979,553?
Is that increase 4.07?
Correct.
Okay.
That is correct.
So Donna, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Just for accuracy, so on the bottom of that, the budget resolution lists the town government budget at 9,095,755.
Yeah.
And then those, do those, those items total as they go down to the bottom of the page, down to?
No, those, those numbers that are on that page, those are the old numbers. We didn't know what, we did not know what the new numbers would be.
Okay, that answers my question, because it, it didn't make sense at 9,095. Okay.
No.
Should have known better. In God and Donna, we trust.
Yeah. If you want to pop that back up, I will slowly work through that and see if I can get that second resolution read, and then we will open it up for discussion.
I, I am, I have it in Word, and I can, I can go in here, I guess, and just change these numbers quickly, and just give me a second, so it'll be exactly what you need.
Oh, okay. Great. Tiffany, I should have given you this one.
I can read this one, too.
Mr. Larson would have given you this one, but, you know.
I'm not that, I'm a nice guy, come on.
You are, that's what I mean. You're a nice guy. You would have given her the better, the easier one, the one that had the blanks filled in.
That, that I would have done, yeah.
You know, I know. Thank you, Donna. Or Donna, are you good?
I believe that is the correct number. Yes.
I'm going to read the 2023 to 2024 Budget Resolution. Be it resolved that the Hebron Board of Selectmen recommend a proposed town government expenditure budget to the May 23rd, 2023 Budget Referendum for fiscal year 2023 to 2024 of 10,979,553, which is a 4.07, or excuse me, 4.07% increase from the fiscal year 2022 to 2023 budget. This includes town government budget of 9,090,755, the contribution to capital improvement, and that's projects over 75,000 of 733,017, contribution to open space, 25,000, contribution to capital projects, and these are the projects from 10,000 to 75,000 of 230,187, contribution to reevaluation of 40,000, and the debt service of 1,105,594.
So I have a correction there for this, the contribution to capital projects. That number, I'm sorry, I forgot to reduce it, but we had to reduce that by the 245.
Okay, I'm sorry. So I'll amend that to correct the contribution to capital improvements, that number, and, and these are for projects over 75,000 for, to 488,017.
That's correct. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. So with those two resolutions read, I think we would now open it up for discussion. Mr. Larson, would you like to start?
Oh, sure. Oh, yeah. And I'll behave. This would probably be the lowest CIP that I've ever been involved with, and I've been involved with CIP project on the committee, whatever, from the time I was, or actually before I was fire chief. We're going backwards instead of forwards, but the whole idea, when CIP was established years ago, that it would be a percentage, I can't remember what that was, of our operating budget, and every year we're falling further and further below that threshold. The other thing that I, I'm really upset with the, with, you know, the voters, there are a lot of huge ticket items that are out of our control, part of it being, you know, the, the RAM budget because of the number of students, but that's a reality, and that's something we have to do. This is part of our commitment. I'm really upset, I think, with the fact that we have had to put so much money into emergency services because the taxpayers, the people of the town are not volunteering. They're expecting somehow someone to magically show up, whether it's fire, EMS, or whatever, but the number of volunteers that we have in the fire department right now is roughly 30 active volunteers, and that may even be off by a few, and not in a good direction. And yet, we have the responsibility of funding this. You know, people want their taxes to be low, then how about standing up and helping their community, instead of just sitting back and complaining? I'm, I'm done. I'm done.
Thank you, Donna.
Send it back to you before, before I go down a bad rabbit hole.
No, I thank you for your, your opinion. Mark?
Unfortunately, this is necessary. My fear is, is that it'll get voted down again, and everybody has to share the burden. Education can share the burden, the town shares the burden. I find it somewhat disturbing that the town budget is always the one that has to make the sacrifices, and it isn't as emotional a topic as education, but keeping people safe should be an emotional topic. And the fact that two guys are leaving to make $20,000 more a year and work less hours, you can't blame somebody for doing it. They have families, they have kids, they're doing that in the best interest of themselves, but we'd have to keep up. We can't just say, oh, that's too bad, we have to fill those slots and keep people in them, or we're not going to be safe. So we have to make some cuts, and I am fearful even with this, that it'll get voted down again, but it's necessary. I'm done.
Thank you, Mark. Tiffany?
Yeah, thank you. So, you know, I, I think that the challenging thing with this budget, when this, when this vote went out, was certainly the $245,000 for designing the Public Works facility. But I think what was most disappointing was just the discourse that I saw on social media, the discourse I think we saw out in the public. There were a lot of people saying that this money was to hire a PR firm, and so I'd like to state emphatically that that money was not to hire a PR firm, it was simply to design a public works facility wherever the public had decided it would go if they had authorized it, et cetera. I would agree, it was the cart before the horse. I'm actually more confident than some of my fellow selectmen, I think taking this out is going to help significantly in getting a budget that will pass, that will hopefully avert more cuts, particularly to the Hebron Board of Education budget. And I'll just say again, I think we need to seriously consider bifurcation as a, as a board, as a town, as a strategy moving forward. So, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Tiffany. Just a couple of things for me. Yeah, I'm, just a couple of comments. I think, listening to the public comment at the beginning from Meg Clifton, I think that really sort of resonated with me a great deal, and, and the comment about taking the money out, 245,000 out for Public Works, I understand, and that might ultimately allow that, the CIP to pass. I don't, I don't agree with that in its entirety, because I think one of the challenges that we have is this communication, missing, or confusion that's, you know, associated probably with us not doing a great job communicating, and I think the public will come away even more confused. They're like, okay, we're not moving forward, the public works, that's off the table, this is great, and, you know, that sort of we won thing. And reality is, we need to move forward with this project in, in some form, and obviously that form is yet to be defined by the public. And the money was put in there originally with the intention that we would be spending it during this next fiscal year, and maybe the cart before the horse, maybe too much money was put there, but I don't agree that we should remove it in its entirety. Now, that presents another challenge, of course, but the, the thing foremost in my mind is, how do we present ourselves in a clear, concise manner to the public, so they are not confused? And that was one of my biggest concerns in all this discourse you talked about, Tiffany, and social media, is that we did lose the narrative, we, we created confusion, that was the biggest comment I got from the constituents, the folks that I spoke to, was, I'm confused, and these are a bunch of smart people, but, and, and the confusion was created by a few, but the, the criticism should come back to, to maybe us, in that we weren't able to effectively over, overcome that with our ability to communicate and to address some of the gaps that are there on social media. We don't do a good job of, of sort of, of answering that social media with facts, not with, you know, getting into the fray, but here are some, here directing people back to the facts, because I would hear often, you know, they're saying this on social media, and the next comment should be, please refer to this from somebody, please refer to this. I don't know who's supposed to do that from us as a, as a town governing body, but somehow we need to do a better job of that. If nothing else, just to, to put the information out there, then people can make decisions as they see fit, but with the basis of, of, of facts, and not conjecture, and not emotion, and things like that, that somehow filter into social media sometimes more than they should. And so I'm a little uncomfortable removing the, the money entirely, because I think it might create some additional confusion. I'd be more inclined to remove most of it, because I understand the messaging than what we heard loud and clear, but is there a way to put some of it, a, a small amount as a placeholder, to remind the public that we really do need to move this project forward in, in, as yet to be defined entirely by the public, but we need to move it forward now, not three years from now, not four years from now, but now, in terms of the next fiscal year. We need to make positive steps forward. And so that maybe has different challenges. We could look at maybe taking a small amount of money out of, as an example, the truck. We could look at maybe taking a small amount of money out of uh, as an example, the truck uh or something else. Or again, if there were a real need, we could look at a special appropriation. And that's not my area, CIP. And I know there's not much left here, Andy, to look at. But I am concerned about that. And I think I don't agree that the town and the um, and this is a little commentary, but the town and the Board of Education should be following the same course of whether there are increases or reductions or dollars, I think they should stand on their own. Um, these are different budgets, entities, these have different um uh support from the public. Um, that that's to view them the same and to treat them the same with the reductions uh that are put forward. I think we miss an opportunity to differentiate between the two, however that is. But the idea that they should be the same, I don't agree with at all. Um, I think um they should be looked at independently and independent decisions made on where that money should come from. And so I was a little disappointed in the, in in that path, not so much the dollar amount, but sort of the lack of the recognition that there really should be a a a view on both of them independently. Uh, and then you could decide, maybe one, you know, comments I hear is, you know, we don't want to do anything more out of the Board of Ed. And comments I hear, maybe we're too, we go too thin on the, on the town, or put too much pressure on the town. But ultimately, it would force that dialogue and get us to look at both budgets independent of each other. And whatever the outcome is, it's reflective of an evaluation of each uh board's budgets independent of each other. So I was a little disappointed about that. Uh, not not, it's just, again, an opinion. It's not my decision to make, but clearly just an opinion. I thought since I had the floor, I would express that in the context of a budget discussion. So um, thank you.
Peter, I would just like to respond to that.
Yeah, Mark.
I think that was really well said, Peter, and uh I concur with you a hundred percent. I also think that voting on the budget separately would be a more prudent thing to do and reflect the will of the people. Um, so I kind of support both of these, but I wish we could get that done sooner rather than later. I'm just not sure what that process is to do.
Thank you, Mark, and thank you for referencing Tiffany as well, because I know that you had brought that up as well in terms of how to think about it separately. But I I'm, I I agree. Uh, but i- in the context of even the reductions is really where my focus was. I think in in just that one example is an example of it's where it's maybe a missed opportunity to think about them independently, at least in that assessment. So um, thank you. Uh, anyone else have any comments they wish to add in reaction to the comments that we all made?
Uh, Dan Larson, you know, and again, I agree. I, you know, people need to realize this is not an issue that's going to be going away. Uh, you know, it it is definitely coming more and more to fruition. This building project needs to move forward sooner than later. Um, I, I do believe, and sadly, I do not do Facebook. Uh, but I've had people come up asking me about things that they have read on Facebook, which are completely and tone totally erroneous. Uh, I know Andy has received phone calls from people uh questioning different aspects, and he's been able to point them to the information that is on our town website. And uh basically, they will all come back with, oh, gee, I never saw that, or I didn't know that was there, or I didn't realize that that had already been looked at. Um, there's a terrible amount of misinformation out there. And I feel that, uh, I'll come right out and say it, the people that are doing this, I don't think are are really looking out for what the best interest of the town is. Um, and, you know, I I applaud all of my fellow uh board members because we're here for the town, for what's going to be best long range for the town. Um, you know, uh, as for the schools, um, I've said it before. I I really am wondering uh with the amount of administrative overhead and with the numbers of students, especially you look at towns like Andover, that I believe they don't even have a hundred students overall. Um, maybe it's time we look at at, you know, at least investigating the possibility of regionalizing the administrative services. Um, you know, long term, we as as small communities are going to have to find uh other ways of of building the mousetrap. Um, and, you know, economically, we just can't keep going down this same road. Uh, we're going to be getting less and less support from the state as a lot of the ARPA funds run out. Uh, it's all gonna be back on the local towns' shoulders. Um, and we need to start coming up with some long-range solutions soon before we're forced into different long-range solutions. So that's just my two cents. And and thank you. Uh, I agree with you, Pete. Um, I agree with you right down the line.
Thank you, Dan. And I think um, listen, hundreds of millions of people aren't wrong with social media, or billions, or whatever it is now. So the idea is it's an opportunity for us to think, you know, how do we do better with our intersection with social media? If people choose to gather their information from social media, they're welcome to do that, and we encourage that that they do that. But then how do we make sure that our message uh as a town is properly intersecting with social media? Just so they have the choice of looking at other sources of information in addition to the comments that are made? Because there's nothing wrong with the platform, it's just how you choose to intersect with the platform. And if those many people are uh using that as their sole source of information, great, no criticism. But how do we help them um get the full perspective? And then therefore make a more informed decision uh and and do so in a way that i- is consistent with how they wish to be communicated with. So it's an opportunity, and hopefully we'll continue to discuss it as a board. Tiffany, I see uh your um, your lights on. Do you have something you like that?
Just a couple of other quick points, because I know the hour is drawing late, and we've got to move this forward. Um, you know, I just want to be very clear that I appreciate the passion on both sides of the DPW debate. I think um there's a lot of good points to be made, right, from an environmental perspective, and I appreciate that. Um, that being said, I think what's being lost in the discussion is that this is also about worker safety. I, employees have a right to work in a place that is safe. And we can debate all day how the building got this bad, what was it, we can debate that all day. But the reality is, I think the town needs to understand, we have to move forward with something, right? I, we have to have a safe place for our public works employees to work in. So while I appreciate your point about you want to try to keep some money in there for a plan, um, I I do, however, think the writing is pretty clearly on the wall. I think it was pretty clear that most people that voted wanted this taken out. And so um I struggle with that, right? Like, if we leave some money in and it goes down again, then we'll be right back here trying to take it out. So it's not an easy decision. I get it. Um, but I think if we don't want to keep doing this until whatever, I I think um, I I don't know that we can leave any money in there. Um, so.
If if I may, just because I'm I'm interested in your opinion, if I may, um, because this is what I'm struggling with.
Yeah.
So uh the uh public, uh, so we move forward, so we take it out entirely? And the the budget passes, and we move forward, and we move forward with the survey, we get a clear direction, the town moves forward um with the next steps as to whatever, whatever that's those steps are, I mean, whatever that the outcome is in terms of the selected site where they want us to focus. And now then we have to spend that money in the middle of the fiscal term, of which we just took it all out. Um, so the money will be, we'll be able to spend the money through other means and be able to secure those funds for other means. But we won't be doing so uh with any direction or input from the public. Are are you comfortable with that? And I'm not, I'm not suggesting that I'm not, I'm just, it's just, what's we thinking about? Is that going to be viewed as misleading? Hey, well, out of sudden, why did you, how did you, how did you get that money to spend? And is that going to cause more confusion?
I, I I hear you, and that makes me uncomfortable, too. That being said, from what I have seen on social media, this two hundred and forty-five thousand dollars was the biggest sticking point anybody discussed. And it's kind of hard to argue that it wasn't a major factor in the votes because the budgets went down pretty handedly. So I agree, I'm not comfortable with it either. Um, but if we are working toward having a budget in place and time for the fiscal year, I I think we're going to have to 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 make a decision and then just, you know, it might be time for, you know, there to be maybe a social media policy for selectmen, where selectmen are able to respond on social media in some capacity. I know some town councils and some local governments do that, where they have a policy where we could engage with people in that way, and that may be what's needed. But to solve the immediate problem, um, i- it's just kind of a gut feeling I have that the two hundred and forty-five thousand is the biggest sticking point in in our budget. And I'm not comfortable either way, but it is what it is. I don't know if that's helpful, but that's kind of where.
It is. I wanted your perspective, because I spoke with that, and I don't want to, I mean, our whole job is to make sure we're transparent, and the public has the right information. And then if we were to spend money later, they're like, I thought you took it out, now you're spending it. And are are we okay with that? As long as we uh, you know, are, continue to be clear with, we took it out, that's what we heard. And then now we've, say, let's fast forward a couple of months, now we've got a clear direction, we're moving forward. Now we're going to have to expend some dollars with the support of the public at referendum. You know, maybe, again, I'm worrying about something I shouldn't worry about. Um, so, thank you. Any other comments from the board?
A cool question.
Okay, so move the question. So with the question being moved, uh, since I'm new, Andy, um, at this uh leading this session, do we do one at a time, or do we do them both in, uh, we do them one at a time, I'm assuming?
Yeah, I would do one at a time. First one on CIP, and the second.
Okay, so the uh fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four CIP budget resolution is now being voted upon. All those in favor say aye, opposed nay, and any abstentions, please note. Um, Tiffany?
Tiffany Tealie, aye.
Dan?
Dan.
Uh, Dan Larson, aye.
Mark?
Mark. Mark Rivera, aye.
Peter Casper, aye. The Belsa Resolution passes as as described. I moved on to two thousand and twenty-three to two thousand and twenty-four budget resolution. This is specific to the town government expenditure budget uh that was previously read it, uh, read it, there you go, read. And um with that, uh, all those in favor, aye, opposed nay, uh, any abstentions, please note. Uh, Tiffany?
Tiffany Tealie, aye.
Thank you, Dan.
Uh, Dan Larson, aye.
Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
Peter Casper, aye. The budget resolution passes as pr- as presented. Thank you. Okay, and so the next two uh items that may move forward, I'm sorry. Did Andy just say something?
Okay, I was waiting for you.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. It's clunky, it's clunky with me today. Hang in there, brother. Hang in there. Okay.
You're doing good.
All right, so eight uh uh E and eight F, Charter Revision, this, I'm sorry, uh, D E, I'm sorry. Uh, D and E are both items noted for no need for discussion or action at this time. That would be the Public Works Building Project Next Steps and the Charter Revision Discussion. Based on that notation in the interest of time, unless someone objects, I would suggest we continue on with the agenda. Any objections to that? Hearing.
Move on.
Oh, Dan?
Move on.
Okay, thank you. Any other old business? Andy? Anyone?
Yep.
Okay, so that uh moves us on to uh new business.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Acting Chairman. Uh, with this, under new business, we have our our town planner, uh, Matt Bardot. And he's going to cover quite a few items that almost flow into one another. And uh he's on here with us tonight, waiting patiently. I appreciate that, Matt. Um, and the first one will be update on the Hebron Plan of Conservation Development. And I know this is something Dan wanted, uh, with everything else we have to do here. I don't know how in-depth Matt's going to go. He knows we're kind of pressed for time, but he can have a dialogue with what he wants to do and then ask Dan questions and anybody else before we move forward.
Yeah, good afternoon, or good evening, everyone. Um, I was attempting to uh use my camera, and um it's not working for some reason. Um, can you all hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, great. Um, you know, at first, I feel inclined to say um, give you a lot of credit for the work you're doing, uh, some challenging content. Um, if it helps at all, uh, you know, please know I have your back, and uh if you have questions or if there's anything I can help you with, please uh don't hesitate to reach out. Uh, I was invited tonight to uh discuss the status of the Plan of Conservation and Development Update. Um, just for some background, this is our townwide ten-year plan that outlines a vision for um, you know, the character of the community. Uh, it's important for a few reasons. It provides direction to the Planning and Zoning Commission in terms of how they establish and amend their comprehensive plan, which is made up of the zoning regulations and the zoning map. Um, it's required uh by state statute and is important um to make the town eligible for discretionary funding opportunities. Uh, so it needs to be updated, uh, it needs to be um current. It also helps uh in some cases in decision uh for decision makers in terms of uh capital improvement planning. Um, the plan update process began in um two thousand and twenty-one with uh former planner Michael Leary, and he was retained to uh serve as a consultant um to assist the Planning and Zoning Commission, author of this document. Um, in this case, for this phase or this round of the update, we're we're, we're in fact updating the plan. This is not going to be a redraft. Um, the plan is sound for the most part, and um there's not a great deal of uh new ideas to bring to the table uh in terms of land use planning. Um, the plan is, so so our current plan was uh adopted in June two thousand and fourteen. So we have until uh next summer to um make all the appropriate amendments and uh adopt it. Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing in advance of that. It'll be uh forwarded to the Board of Selectmen. Uh, it'll be reviewed by the state and ultimately adopted. Um, the plan is broken down into a series of categories, but very generally conservation and development. So uh the um, the Planning and Zoning Commission has spent a great deal of time um so far considering the conservation component of the plan. Um, what I wanted to do is um share with you some updates I've made recently to the Town of Hebron website. So I see I've been enabled to share my screen. Hopefully, you can see that. Just want to navigate for you um to the Planning and Zoning Commission or Planning Department page. So under Town Departments, you have the Planning, Planning and Development. And that first header or first option there is Plan of Conservation and Development. So here, we were discussing how we're updating the plan, and there's a copy here of the two thousand and fourteen Plan of Conservation Development for viewing. There's some content about what is the plan, why is it important, why is it being updated? And then we go to how is the process going? So here, um, we have a link to a status table, which I'll share in a minute. Um, but in terms of where we are in the process, Planning and Zoning Commission has um substantially finalized its Conservation Section draft. That section um includes a whole gamut of of content. Um, you know, underwater drinking, drinking supply is incredibly important in the Town of Hebron. Um, natural resources, stream, you know, streams, water bodies, wetland soils, the lake, of course. Um, open space is a very, you know, key character building, a component of the Town of Hebron. Uh, institutional lands, agriculture, and other key wildlife, um scenic vistas and streetscapes, uh historic heritage, recreation, open space. So that portion of the plan is substantially drafted. And in, you know, uh, I think it was September two thousand and twenty-two, the Planning and Zoning Commission did hold a public information meeting, and the slideshow that was presented during that meeting is available here um under the Conservation Conservation Section slideshow. So rather than sitting through the whole presentation, which of course is available on uh the website under the Agenda Meetings, uh Minutes and Legal Notices, you can watch it. Uh, it's also available in slideshow format there. Um, what I'll do, just to give you a status uh update, um, is share this table. This is broken down into the responsibilities, uh, different subcommittee members that have played a role, coordination with other agencies, notes regarding where we are in the planning process, uh, and then target date for the completion of various sections. So, Community Pro- So, Community Profile is something that was recently improved. And the Planning and Zoning Commission has taken a look at that. But substantially, we began with the conservation portion of the plan. Sustainability due to its overarching nature, um, not just related to the environment or the conservation policies and objectives, but, um, its role in, you know, in everything in terms of our economic development as well. That will be completed near the end of the process so that those themes can carry across, you know, all, all the various, um, you know, planning policies and objectives that have already been considered. So I already discussed most of these conservation components. And along the way, when there was a need for content, um, or there was an area of interest that, um, overlapped with other stakeholders in the community, Michael Leary has drafted letters, sent portions of the plan to those groups and, um, in, and, and requested their feedback. And we've had some pretty good, um, response from some stakeholders. So here's additional conservation portions of the plan. And then, you know, the other big section of the plan, of course, is development. So that's the way we've broken it down in our plan is, um, to address each of the business districts and the way we've addressed those are consistent with our zoning districts. Of course, you know, beginning with an introduction and kind of an overall, um, uh, view of, of business and economic development. But we work our way through the various, um, business districts substantially in the center of town and some along the eighty-five corridor. And then, um, there's a, a healthy portion related to, um, residential development, and that is currently being worked on. Where and when possible, we will provide reference in the plan to other plans that have been adopted recently or that's content is very, uh, relevant and inconsistent with the themes in the plan. So for example, what I'm going to discuss later on is our, uh, Plan for Housing Choices that was recently adopted. So, you know, those plans or those, those, those goals and objectives in that plan, of course, ought to be consistent with our Plan of Conservation Development and therefore, you know, in order to avoid the redundancy, um, we just make reference substantially to that plan, um, because the content is all, you know, relatively new, very relevant. What we're beginning to embark on and recently, letters were sent out to the key, key stakeholders in these areas are related to municipal infrastructure. So that begins with education, but goes through all our emergency services, our town facilities, um, our public works, you know, e- even includes cemeteries, uh, roadways, walk, uh, roadways, bridges and walkways, and then our utility infrastructure. So we're in the process of gathering feedback from, again, community stakeholders. Typically, the way this process has worked is that Michael Leary will take that feedback, make some updates to the plan. Um, and then the Planning and Zoning Commission can think a little bit about what the feedback has been, what, um, you know, what some of the action items are that, uh, come out of those conversations, uh, or that, or that feedback. And then make some recommendations for, you know, uh, future, uh, goals and objectives, future action items that the town should consider or can consider. So again, I said, you know, we're, we're starting to reach the point where, uh, we need to kind of wrap this up. We have about a year to go. Uh, and there's going to be some, you know, some of the bureaucratic steps towards the end that we want to give ourselves enough time to manage. So I will continue to, um, improve the website with, um, an updated status table. I will include, um, drafts of each section. And then in the not-too-distant future, we're thinking July or August, we'll probably get around to another public information meeting related to, you know, the second substantial portion of the plan, the development section. In which case, the Planning and Zoning Commission will probably make a presentation that follows the slideshow similar to the Conservation Section. I can make that update on the, on the, um, on the website and then, um, and, you know, we'll continue the process from there. If there is input that you want to provide, and this has been made available to the public all along, uh, here at the bottom, it says, you know, can I have input? And here are my ideas. And there's a link to, um, Michael Leary's, uh, email address. He's been, uh, receiving all this content, um, and storing it so that the Planning and Zoning Commission can review it periodically when it's relevant to the section we're working on. So, um, I think I can stop sharing there. And if there are any questions, um, or any suggestions on, you know, communication, I know it's always a challenge, um, all ears.
Anyone on the board?
Okay. Uh, sure.
Dan Larson.
Yes. How we doing? I know. They're going to say, why can't we just tape his mouth closed? One of the reasons, actually, a few of the reasons. Planning and zoning has made numerous changes over the years. Uh, one of them concerned foul and what you could have and, and, you know, the numbers and what have you. Uh, and there are people out there that have had, you know, again, chickens or whatever for decades, never even knowing that changes have been made. Another, uh, thing is, is, you know, some of the wetland setbacks. Again, years ago, um, they had made wetland setback changes, but people didn't find out until, uh, whether by accident or, you know, by plan of looking to possibly, you know, either build, develop, add on whatever onto their property. So these are the kinds of things that, um, worry me. Uh, as the, you know, chief elected board for the town, i.e. the Board of Selectmen, I really feel that we should have at least an idea of, of some of the thoughts and, and some of the directions that they are going, uh, in. Without us actually having to, you know, attend meetings. I, I, I really have no idea what direction they're going. I know they've contacted other various assorted groups, uh, for their input. But we, as the Board of Selectmen, never seem to get any kind of updates. You know, we're thinking of, of, you know, whether it's changing setbacks, uh, changing, uh, I don't know if there's anything like lot clearing, whatever. We don't know about it, and that worries me. You know, I'm not sure how the rest of the board feels, but, you know, I feel we, we kind of sort of need to know what the direction is that they're looking at, some of their ideas.
Yeah, so, uh, Chairman Larson, if, if you don't mind, I can respond a little bit to that, um, concern. And there's a few different pieces, uh, that I think need to be addressed in, in those comments. You know, the Plan of Conservation and Development is supposed to be a broad, broad visionary, visionary document. Yes, it does provide some direction thematically, uh, to some of the more, um, minute or, or, uh, smaller scale, more specific decisions that the Planning and Zoning Commission makes. But, you know, some of the, the, um, you know, the actions that you referenced that the Planning and Zoning Commission have made recently are, are probably not going to be found. The content that you're looking for is probably not going to be found in the Planet, uh, Plan of Conservation Development. A lot of the, a lot of the, um, the, the changes that have occurred recently in the zoning regulations, many of them come down from state directives. Substantially, you know, you mentioned the, the, the idea of, uh, wetlands setbacks and things like that, that, that largely comes down from state directives. And, and a lot of those other decisions that come down are, are derived from either complaints or repetitive concerns. That, you know, um, the, the zoning regulations are often about, are often concerned with, you know, preserving, um, well, first of all, you know, property values, and second of all, um, you know, minimizing nuisances, minimizing conflicts amongst neighbors and whatnot. So I think that's where a lot of those decisions come down from. What may be overlooked from time to time is the historic, um, precedent, I guess, is some of the, um, the activities, um, typically try to recognize, you know, the agricultural heritage of the community, um, the rural heritage of the community, recognize that, you know, hey, you know, these, you know, some folks were here first and, and, and with that comes, and ought to come some, some rights and some expectations for folks that are new to the community. And I, I think largely the, the Planning and Zoning Commission has been considered of that. In terms of communication, you know, the, the board does, or, or I believe has a liaison. Every decision that gets made in terms of a change to the, either the zoning regulations or the zoning map requires a public hearing, so there is always the opportunity to provide feedback. Those are, those are always advertised. We could probably establish policy, um, where I can make a direct, um, referral to the Board of Selectmen. It doesn't seem that far-fetched. Uh, probably would not be that cumbersome, uh, and, and additional step. But, um, you know, we, we do our best to, um, advertise and communicate as best we can and certainly consistent with, you know, what's mandated by statute, state statute. But I understand your concerns. Um, again, you know, as, as you guys know, communication is very challenging. I don't think you'll find in the Plan of Conservation Development that Playing and Zoning Commission has any, you know, any plans to, you know, change the character of the community. In fact, typically every decision they make is, is, is very considerate of, you know, preserving character. But I do understand what you're saying.
Thank you.
Good, Dan. Thank you, Matt. Anyone else from that relative to this first section? And Andy, you said he's covering other sections. You want to just take it from, you know, move us through this section of the agenda? You know, you're not going to, man.
Yeah, yeah, I could, I could take it from here. So the next, um, item I'm supposed to address is regarding the Housing Choices Plan Advisory Committee. Kind of, uh, you know, a, a take from one of the plans recently adopted, um, which will of course be by reference to the Plan of Conservation Development. But that is our, um, Plan for Housing Choices recently adopted. This, you know, of course, the plan, as you're aware, was mandated by the state, designed to be a five-year plan that addresses housing needs. You know, this was before my time and, and I, I was actually very impressed with the document. What impressed me was that, um, there's a great deal of information, very considerate of, you, you know, makes it very Hebron-specific, Hebron, Hebron-centric. But outlines goals and objectives that are realistic for the Town of Hebron. And, you know, the kind of segues into, you know, why I'm here for the next two items. So one of the recommendations of the plan was to establish an advisory committee. And, um, you know, there's, there's, in the proposal, you'll see a couple of ideas of, of what that advisory committee might do. But from my take, you know, as staff, the makeup of the working group that drafted the plan was very well-rounded and, uh, just had a great knowledge base. So my recommendation, um, or, or it was brought to me that, you know, this advisory committee could be an evolution of that working group, um, kind of like the next step. And because this is a five-year plan, keeping that group together, um, to kind of be an advocate and to make recommendations on how to further some of the goals and objectives of that plan is, is great from a planning perspective because too often those plans wind up collecting dust on a shelf someplace. But because there's also a mandate that it'd be updated every five years, keeping that knowledge base together to be ready to make recommendations and be ready to, um, address where there have been successes or failures or deficiencies in the plan, um, would be a huge asset, in my opinion. So essentially, I'm here recommending, um, that the Board of Selectmen consider, uh, establishing by ordinance an advisory committee to follow up on, you know, our, our charge, uh, to address housing needs in the community. And, um, and if the board is, um, in favor of this concept, I can draft a, um, a potential ordinance for the commission, or for the board to consider and return at a future meeting with something in hand for you to, uh, potentially act on. So I'm just, uh, looking for a little bit of feedback and how you'd like me to proceed, if at all.
Hey, thoughts from the board?
Uh, Dan Larson, I think it's a great idea. I think it's, you know, I definitely would welcome him to continuing with that endeavor.
Tiffany?
Yeah, I'd agree. Thank you.
Mark? Mark, I see your mic's off or on, but I don't hear you. Okay, sounds like Mark, uh, might be having some technical difficulties. I would agree. I mean, housing choices, I mean, it's such an important topic and something that we really should continue to focus on. So this is really good work. So I think at least unless I hear differently from Mark, you, uh, have the support to move forward and, and, um, take the next steps in, in creating something that we can react to at a future meeting.
Okay, that's great. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
And so that will lead me into, um, the next item on your agenda, which was related to, uh, the Community Commons or the Commons Community Development Corporation. I am here to, um, recommend or propose a resolution of support and approval for the Connecticut Communities Challenge Grant Program application as well as a general endorsement of, uh, or, or seek a general endorsement of the Community Commons, excuse me, Commons CDC, um, initiative generally. Now, I know that, um, Father Ron, uh, from St. Peter's Congregation has been here in the past to discuss the goals of that initiative. But to follow up on our Plan for Housing Choices, one of the goals, uh, or, excuse me, probably, probably was an objective in this case, was to consider partnership with, um, nonprofit or faith-based organizations in an effort to, um, provide housing, housing choices and provide housing opportunities. In this case, we have, um, you know, one of our own who, uh, are, are moving forward with great earnest and, uh, great, um, you know, um, great.
Zeal?
Zeal, there you go. Um, you move forward a project specifically, um, for Sixty Church Street. And I, I think you've seen some renderings of the conceptual plan. To put a project like this together is going to require, um, some support from state, federal, um, and, and sometimes outside, you know, philanthropic, uh, uh, funding sources or initiatives. So the reason for the idea behind not just support for the Connecticut Communities Challenge Grant Program application, but also for, uh, a general endorsement of the project is many of those grant opportunities require an endorsement from the, from the, uh, municipality. And because the timelines are always so, um, difficult, very rarely do they jive with, um, you know, this board's meeting in, in preparation of a draft, uh, resolution, whatnot. A general endorsement might go a long way and be very useful for their, their efforts going forward. Specific to the Connecticut Communities Challenge Grant Program, um, this is an. Um, this is an economic development uh initiative. Or or program, but also seeks to solve some of the other um. Challenges in the community such as housing, such as transportation, infrastructure, uh, infrastructure generally. Um, this is a matching grant program. And in this, in the, in the case, in this case, it is a minimum of fifty percent match. However, um. ARPA funding can actually be used as the match. So as the common CDC seeks to pursue this grant program application. Um. By framing their improvements as a um, a community development project. Um, all the investments that the Board of Selectmen has already um endorsed in terms of um improvements in the center of town. Can actually be used to satisfy the matching requirements. So this would not be like new money that is um. You know, the the town would have to come up with to support the project. So I think it's a, it's a great opportunity. Um, to further their goals, um, which are in fact consistent with the housing plan. And um. And and would come at, you know, no expense to the town. So um, that's why I prepared these two resolutions for your consideration.
Any comments from the board?
I was gonna say, if you want to read the resolution, then we can do our comments and then.
Okay, that's fine. That's good, good reminder. Okay, um, so. I will start. So this, the proposed resolution is supportive of common CDC initiative. That's the first one you'd like me to read. Sorry. Okay, whereas the Hebron twenty twenty-two to twenty-seven, twenty twenty-seven plan for housing choices adopted May twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-two. Demonstrates both the need for affordable housing and the desire to build more diverse housing in the community and. Whereas the plan calls for an increase in the number of affordable housing units by at least seventy-five in five years. And whereas the town of Hebron Plan of Conservation and Development includes goals. Related to the provision of various, varied, safe and attractive residential growth, including. Uh, to provide diversity in the types of housing within the town that will satisfy the needs of all socioeconomic and demographic levels to provide. For appropriate areas within the socioeconomic and demographic levels to provide for appropriate areas within the town where. Alternative forms of housing may occur and to encourage the production of housing, both rental and owner occupied in an acceptable. Quantity, sorry, it's a little small for me and quality to meet the economic means of the town's population with particular attention given to housing for elderly. Thank you. Lower income families and to those just entering the workforce. Therefore, be it resolved that the town of Hebron Board of Selectmen seeking to further the goals and objectives of the Hebron twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-seven plan for housing choices. Supports the efforts of the Commons Community Development Corporation to develop high quality housing intended to meet the needs of low and moderate income households in Hebron. And authorize the town manager and town planner to assist in the application for public funding opportunities. When those opportunities are appropriate for the project and fiscally responsible in consideration of the use of taxpayer funds. Hey, if everyone's comfortable, I'll read the second uh resolution. You could. Scroll for me, please. Thank you so much. Proposed resolution in support of communities challenge grant program application be resolved at the Hebron Board of Selectmen approve the application. To the Connecticut Communities Challenge Grant Program for improvements proposed in Hebron Center. Including those in support of the Commons Community Development Corporation's effort to develop housing for low and moderate income families. At sixty church street and authorize Andrew J Tierney, town manager, to sign any necessary grant documents. And to apply for, accept and receive the grant if awarded. So the resolutions have been read. Any further discussion?
Uh, sure, Dan Larson.
Sure.
Go ahead, Dan. I, I personally feel this is a win-win for the town. Uh, I say that and and I've had people come up to me. Who are irate that the state has said and mandated that the community uh. Do some of of these actions. Uh, but that being said. Um. We have a a group of people who have, they're first off, they're local. Uh, these are our neighbors. Uh, they are, have been willing and are willing to step up and try to meet these needs. Uh, and and they have been very, very uh active in in pursuing these goals. Uh, for the betterment of our community. Um. I'm, I am much happier having our neighbors putting this forward. As compared to some developer that we have no idea who or what their ideas are to just come to town. Say the state's saying that, you know, everybody's mandated to do X, Y, Z. We are here going to do it. We're doing it our way and you have no option. Uh, I support these resolutions. I, I think. I think it's it's uh the best option for us and um. You know, the other thing is it takes at least a a certain amount of weight off of the town's shoulders. In trying to meet some of these uh goals. Thank you.
Anyone else on the board wish to comment, Tiffany?
Yeah, thank you. Um, I would, I would echo um the chairman's thoughts. Um, I don't think it's any secret that. There's a housing crisis, I think, and not just in the state and across the country, not just in terms of. People being able to buy houses enough and to be able to afford to buy houses, but also in terms of of rent. I think renters are also struggling right now with the high, high cost of housing. Um, I am very much supportive of affordable housing. I think Connecticut has a rather disturbing legacy of redlining. Um, and I think that it's wonderful to see members of our community respond to that legacy by coming together. And developing, you know, what we hope will be a plan that will um. Enable the construction of this kind of housing um with, you know, with a semblance of how it will fit within the town's center. Um, so I also support these resolutions as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. I know we had trouble with your, hearing you from before. Do you want to try again? Anything you'd like to add? Sorry, Mark, we're still not able to hear you. I know you're gonna have something really, really good to say, too. Yeah, sorry, Mark, we're still unable to hear you. All right, um, unfortunately, Mark's, uh, we can't hear Mark's comments, um, but if he's able to. Um, join us later with the audio, then by all means, I'm happy to uh allow him to finish those comments that we weren't able to hear specific to these two items. Okay, um, so thank you for your comments and based on that, I think um. We're at a position now where we uh can vote unless someone has anything else they wish to add. Okay, um, Donna, could you just scroll up me, please?
So, uh, Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Of course, Andy.
Well, Donna's doing that. Um, in order to vote, you have to have a quorum and without hearing Mark, I'm not sure how that that works. Uh, seeing as.
If all three of us vote affirmative, then we're set.
Yeah.
That's right. You're, there's four of you. Okay, you're right. That's right. You joined. That's right, Dan, you joined. Sorry about that. I'm getting tired.
Oh, no, hey, I'm tired too. Um, so thank you uh for at least allowing us to clarify that uh for the public as well. So. Uh, we'll vote on the first uh resolution, which is entitled the, on the screen, a proposed resolution in support of Commons CDC initiative. Uh, and all those in favor, aye, opposed, nay. Uh, any abstentions, please make us aware of that. Tiffany?
Tiffany Teale, aye.
Dan?
Uh, Dan Larson, aye.
I'll try again. Uh, Mark? Yeah, we're not able to connect with Mark, but Peter Casper, aye. So based on a vote of three. Um, that is in the affirmative, the resolution passes. Second resolution, proposed resolution in support of the Communities Challenge Grant Program Application, all those in favor, aye, opposed, nay, extensions, please note. Tiffany, please.
Tiffany Teale, aye.
Mr. Larson?
Uh, Dan Larson, aye.
Peter Casper, aye, the motion passes and the resolution, excuse me, passes. Thank you very much. And Matt, do you have uh anything else on this agenda that you're, that you're going to be covering or?
Not that I'm aware of.
Come on, jump in, brother. Um, thank you for for joining. Thank you. I apologize that you had to wait so long um to to participate, but. Um, just my, my own perspective, we appreciate the thoroughness in which you. Approach your job and and the detail that you provide to us and the communication is is very welcome. So thank you for taking the time um to go through this with us tonight.
You're very welcome.
Okay.
Thank you, Matt.
All right, so new business that moves us through to uh nine D. Andy, approve revised job description, building official.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, as I stated earlier in the town manager report, we're going to be going through a lot of new hires. Uh, this is one where we felt. The job description needed to be updated, attached as a proposed revision of the building official zoning enforcement officer. And there's a proposed resolution behind that. It was in your packet. You can see what was revised. Uh, it's it's uh underscored and then the other ones crossed out the changes and and mine and my issue and other one, it's in blue. And then the other one uh in the back, there's, there's a couple more changes all in blue. So this is a formality. We, we've had this looked at. Uh, we're proposing that the Board of Selectmen approve this as we are now advertising for a building official.
Okay, so if I may, if you could scroll back up, I'll read the resolution. We'll open up for discussion and then vote uh after discussion. Okay, proposed resolution, we're gonna move, move that the Hebron Board of Selectmen approve the revised job description for the building of. Official slash zoning enforcement officer as presented in parentheses or amended with the resul, with the resolution read. So any discussions or comments on what Andy just provided? Go ahead, Tiffany, please.
Yeah, I have, I have, I have a question. How are these job descriptions edited? What's the process? Are they? Being compared against similar job descriptions um at other towns? I just, I think it's helpful for the selectmen to understand. How these are updated um and and what you're using as a framework. Thank you.
Yeah, so that's a great question. Thank you, Tiffany. Um, what we do is um, you know. The person that's been in this position has been here for a while, so we, we haven't really updated it. And now that he's leaving, we looked at all the new uh state statutes, criteria, um, some of the things that. We have him review that he thinks should be changed as he's uh progressed or the statutes have progressed. And then we also do look at other possible job descriptions, but we run it by our town attorney as well to make sure that what we're doing. Is appropriate. So there's a few different things that we do, you know, we look at our, you know, existing building official who's in good standing. And any changes that have come through uh, you know, the state policies and procedures, we we kind of try to address those to meet the standards of today.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ian, any comments? I see. What about?
Can you hear me now, Pete?
Yes, yes, Mark, go ahead.
All right, hey, I would have uh voted yes on on the affordable housing. Um, I just wanted to make sure I'm back in the ballgame here, so I'll uh, I'll, I'll chime in on the next thing.
Okay, well, i- is it possible then to amend that um to reflect his, his vote?
Yes, he's here and his vote counts.
Okay, so if we could please amend the vote um to uh reflect Mark's vote as a, as a yes for that um. That last proposal. Thank you. Okay. Both of them, I'm sorry. Yes, thank you. Good point. Okay, any further discussion? So no further discussion, um, we're gonna vote on the resolution, all in favor, aye, opposed, nay, abstentions, please note. Tiffany?
Tiffany Teale, aye.
While we have you, Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
Yeah, that's it, brother. Okay, Dan?
Uh, Dan Larson, aye.
Peter Casper, aye. The resolution passes. Thank you. Okay, uh, E, eight, nine, E, Connecticut Neighborhood Assistance Act Tax Credit Program, Mr. Tierney?
Okay, so bear with me, everyone, on this. So this is something that's a little bit time sensitive. Um, we were gonna bring this up at the last meeting. We felt we still had enough time to get it through, but because we didn't have that for whatever reason, here we are today. So. This is something we've, we haven't done in a while, but it's in front of us and I was gonna put it in front of the Board of Selectmen. But we would have to conduct a public hearing and that would need to be done uh by June first. So we haven't even acted on this yet. Once we, if we were to act on this tonight, then we would have to solicit uh some of the nonprofits that are interested. And wait for them to send back uh the information. I'm not sure there's enough time to do all that. And uh, I'm not trying to sway anybody's vote. You can all weigh in on on what you think. But we really haven't had a lot of interest in the past on this and and I could have Donna. From my office also speak to that, but I, I, I don't think we've had any interests in a while, but because it came up, we wanted to put it in front of you, but. Now, with everything else we got going on with the referendum and stuff and the public hearing that we mandated that we have and the time. That we have to do it, I'm not sure that we would uh come out with a successful outcome. Donna, did you want to say anything?
Um, I, I would just say the last time we did this was in twenty seventeen and we did conduct a public hearing at that time. And we had no participation. So what, what it is, is that um. Nonprofits and some organizations can receive contributions. And the contributors can receive tax credits. So it would be something um that A H M. Or in the past, it was Easter seals, but um, you know, organizations like that, if they have big contributors. Um, could maybe take advantage of it. So we, we could potentially set the public hearing and try to get the information out there, but it. It will be a pretty quick turnaround.
So knowing that it's up to the Board of Selectmen and we'll leave it at that.
So I'll read the. Oh, oh, go ahead, Dan.
I was gonna say, has A H M or uh Father Ron's group? They did any kind of interest in this?
We haven't announced it uh this year because we had wanted to bring it up to you guys first, but. In the past, we haven't had any participation. Actually, I don't think we've done it in the last couple of years.
Yeah, the last time we did it was twenty seventeen.
Okay, so.
I'm constrained that, that we pass on at this time.
So let's do this, if I may, in the interest of consistency, I'm gonna read the motion and then let's have that discussion and then we'll vote. Uh, if I may, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, no, that's fine.
Thank you. Um, just so everyone's sort of on the same page with this. Uh, move, the proposed motion is that uh move that the, excuse me, move that the Hebron Board of Selectmen schedule a virtual. Public hearing on program proposals for inclusion in the twenty twenty-three Connecticut Neighborhood Assistance Act Program for Thursday, June first, twenty twenty-three at six forty-five. PM. So let's uh open it up for any additional comments. Dan, you've just made yours. Anything else you wish to add, Dan, before we move to someone else?
Uh, no, no, go ahead.
Okay, okay, thank you. Go ahead, Tiffany. I see your.
I, the only thing I'm going to say, and I don't mean to complicate it, but this is um actually the agency I work for, so I would be abstaining regardless from the vote. I mean, I don't. I don't, I'd rather abstain and be safe, you know, with ethics. Um, so I'm abstaining no matter what.
Okay, Mark?
Uh, I, I agree with Dan. I'm inclined to pass at this point on voting on this.
Okay, um. And then so Donna, so we did it in twenty seventeen and then we haven't done it since. Is that, I'm, I'm sort of making sure I understand what was just.
Years, years, yeah, that's correct. Years ago, we used to do it every year. Um, you know, I'm talking, you know, twenty, twenty-five years ago, we used to do it every year and back then I do believe we had a little bit of. Participation, but um, the last, the last few times we did. Um, hold the public hearing and advertise it and solicit. Um, there was no participation and in twenty seventeen, there was no participation. And I think the last couple of years, we've just um. Not even. And I think the last couple of years, we've just um not even considered bringing it forward. But we thought we should, you know, try again to just bring it to your attention.
Okay, so I would, I would agree. In the interest of time, it would seem like it would be difficult to get through any reaction that was then different than in the past. And so maybe we can uh agree to 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 revisit this next year in a, in a, you know, earlier and and with the idea that we can do it. Uh, to make another good faith effort to make sure there isn't any interest. And 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 I would be fine with that, because I think you're right, in the interest of time, I think it'd be very difficult, and almost like a self-fulfilling conclusion, we'd be still with probably zero interest. And maybe next year, we can make some sort of calendar note to bring this out in a couple of months earlier and 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 maybe we at least. Could conclude with uh knowing that we gave enough time. Um, so that's, that's my position. So uh, any other comments?
I just, and again, let's read, go to Tiffany. Uh, yeah, I, I, I'm just curious. You know, we had put it out there in the past, I regret this year because of time, but. How has the the response to this program been? And I'm just curious why we've had such lackluster uh response to this program? Any kind of history?
Are you asking me, Dan?
Oh, yes, he did mention anything.
Yeah, um, I've only been with the agency for like seven months, so I honestly couldn't tell you, um, but I do think it's a good question.
You know, I, I just, you know, I, to me, I would jump up a dollar for grants. Um, and I, I just, surprising that. You know, I'm not sure why people aren't, aren't, you know, saying, hey, we want to apply for that unless. The the parameters of the grant, which without knowing, I I just don't know. Uh, okay, I didn't know if you had any kind of of history on it.
It, and I think, Dan, you're right, I think it sounds like it's probably worth exploring when we have more time to better understand it and maybe see how we can go about it differently, but uh, Andy, do you have something you want to add? Andy?
Well, no, but it, it, yeah, can you hear me?
No, I can, I couldn't hear it from him, I'm sorry.
Can you hear me?
I thought you wanted to add something.
Okay, so, yeah, so no, it's, it's, well, I just wanted to clarify, it's not really a grant. What it is, it's a tax credit program for tax for. People that donate to organizations, if it's um large enough, then they could apply, this would, they could apply for the tax credit. And we, that's, that's kind of, it's kind of like a pass-through. Um, so I can't answer the questions any more than that. I'm, I'm not that familiar with it because we really didn't get into it um for a long time now.
Okay, so um, the motion's been read, uh, let's move forward with the vote. All those in favor, aye, uh, in in opposition, no, and and obviously in this particular case, but I'll ask her to state it again, Tiffany, uh, for an abstention or anyone else. Uh, so Tiffany?
Tiffany Teale, I abstain.
Okay, thank you. Dan?
Uh, I vote to decline.
Okay, Dan, Mark, thank you, Mark.
Uh, I vote to decline, too.
And Peter Casper votes nay, so uh the motion, the proposed motion does not pass. Thank you all very much. Okay.
Okay.
Next is the review tax abatement interest rate for twenty twenty-three, Andy?
Yes, so we do this yearly. Uh, this is considered ordinance, chapter three twenty, article twelve. Abatement deferral on property taxes for persons of limited income, annual interest rate review. And then there's a, and it lists the tax abatement ordinance, three twenty, article twelve, was established by the Board of Selectmen in April two thousand. The ordinance created person into general statute twelve dash one twenty-four A. The ordinance caps a property owner's taxes on a reserve residential dwelling. Eight percent of the total income from any source taxes that exceed that amount are conveyed. To the town in the form of a lien created and secured. An obligation to reimburse in the town in the amount of the tax abated with interest. Those taxes, along with the interest, are paid to the town by no later than the date of the sale or transfer of such real property or upon the death. Of the last surviving owner. As part of the annual interest rate review, the board has the option to adjust the interest rate. Bear with me, the town manager is recommending the interest rate uh for two thousand and twenty-three be increased. From a one point five percent to a three point five percent. And I just want to add a clarification why it says that. It's historically in the past, we've always reached out to to selectmen and now past selectmen, uh, Brian O'Connell. Um, for his advice, and he has a memo in the very back. We have the statute uh also attached, but in the very back, there's a memo. From Mr. O'Connell, and it says, I would suggest a three point five percent. Reasoning is to use a federal rate that is in line with the high quality debt. The Fed ten-year Treasury, I believe, is a good benchmark to stick with. You are both given residence assistance and holding the town of Hebron harmless at best possible. So that's his suggestion. That's the reason it reads my suggestion, because in the past, we've used it, but it's totally up to the board.
Okay, so uh, and for those that uh don't know the esteemed Mr. O'Connell, he is a uh, uh, financial services uh expert. I think if I understand his role in the, in business correctly or has that expertise to provide that advice. So uh, since I, since I can only see you, Tiffany, if you'd be so kind as to read the proposed resolution.
Surely. Uh, be it resolved by the Hebron Board of Selectmen that in accordance with chapter three twenty, article twelve, section three twenty dash twenty of the Hebron Town Code. The tax abatement interest rate for twenty twenty-three be set at three point five percent.
Hey, thank you for that. Any uh, any discussion? Dan?
Move the question?
Okay, the question has been moved. All those in favor say aye, opposed, nay, abstentions, please, no. Tiffany?
Tiffany Teale, aye.
Dan?
Uh, Dan Larson, aye.
Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
Peter Casper, aye, the resolution passes. Thank you. Okay, the um G, nine G, the draft agenda for May eighteenth, twenty twenty-three. Which is on your screen, so anything you wish to add, uh, please contact the uh, the town office and get that added. Um, if I may move on, H, any other new business, Mr. Tierney? Anything that you. Okay, anyone else, new business that hasn't otherwise been noted? Okay, everyone's comfortable with that. We're gonna move to uh, no, uh, number ten, which is the consent agenda. And consent agenda items are considered to be routine in nature, which the board may not need to discuss individually. It may be voted on as a group. Any board member who wishes to discuss a particular item in the section, they request the chair to remove it. For later discussion in a separate vote if necessary. So we have the approval of the minutes, March twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three, Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance, Budget Meeting, the April sixth, twenty twenty-three regular meeting. Then we have approval of the tax refunds as listed. Does anyone suggest or require that any of these items be removed for individual discussion? Okay, so based on that, uh, the proposed motion moved that the board of selectmen approve the following consent agenda items and motions contained therein as if individually adopted. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay, or abstentions. Tiffany?
Tiffany Teale, aye.
Dan?
Uh, Dan Larson, aye.
Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
Peter Casper, aye. The motion, the motion passes. Thank you. Okay, liaison reports. Um, so in the interest, uh, Gail is not with us uh at the meeting tonight, so just looking down the list, the interest of time, I will uh, do not have an update, Tiffany?
In the interest of night, of time, I do not have an update either.
Mark?
And I don't either.
Dan?
No, in the interest of time.
Not to put pressure on you, but Andy?
Just quickly, that we're buttoning up the sewer improvements that's finally coming to a close. They're doing the landscaping and final inspections punchless, so hopefully that'll be completed.
Hey, thank you all very much. Uh, number twelve is public comment. Donna, or is there anyone that wishes to make a comment?
There are no public comments at this time.
What happens when the meetings go so long? Okay, so we have uh item thirteen, which is the anticipated executive session, and. I'm struggling a little bit because I like to get uh to be here with an appropriate level of energy. Uh, and we are at the nine, uh, just about nine thirty. Is this, are these items that must, we must move forward uh tonight? Or does anyone have any, if everyone has the energy, we'll keep going if.
Pete, Pete, I agree with you. I I like to do this while Dan and I could be on Zoom, too, so we can all see each other, and. I know Andy's had a lot of meetings today. Uh, we've been really busy, so I know Andy's tired, so. Andy, uh, if if it's okay with you, um, well, uh, I think it'd be best to move this to another day.
That's the annual evaluation. Andy, what about the collective bargaining component? Does that need to be addressed tonight?
Um, not at the, not at the board of selectmen, uh, don't choose to do that. I don't, I'm not upset about either one of those because of the timing of the. The evening or the hours that we spent here, um, long as we ratified that before the fiscal year, but uh. Okay, we could do that to make a plan to, this agenda was a little bit heavy due to two meetings in one and. Referendum results, so I don't think the next meeting should be as bad, so, but shoot for that. If you guys are, that's your, your choice. I'm okay with either way.
I see Tiffany, Tiffany, there you go, that's how ladies get it, I'm calling you Tiffany. So Tiffany nodded, are you?
Am I the only night owl on this call?
Yes, you are. Yes, you are. I know Tiffany, Tiffany, the evening has just started, and I'm looking for, looking for my pajamas and my slippers.
Totally fine with postponing. I agree. It's been, we got through a lot, but it was a long meeting, so.
Thank you for uh, for helping the rest of us. I appreciate it. So without any then further uh objection, um, I will uh. If the uh board is so inclined, I'll make a motion at nine thirty-one um to uh, to end our meeting, and may I have a second, please?
Have a second, and good job, Pete. Great job tonight.
Thank you so much. Thank you for your patience uh and letting me to wander through this, Andy. Thank you, Donna, thank you, and thank you, everyone. That stayed with us throughout the meeting. I have a good night, everybody.